All right, it's February 7th, 2023, 7:30 PM. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, myself, Bob Shabid, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Ben Smoski, and seat Michael Johansson for Jim Sappaul. So we'll see Michael Johansson for, who else is in there?
John Tien.
Welcome. All right, I am on the agenda. No applications for receipt of public hearings tonight.
John Tien's online.
All right, I have a meeting under new business, 824 referral from Board of Selectmen School Project. Before we go on this mic, for the new members here, you want to give a little primer on what an 824 review actually is and what it's for?
Yes, so 824 refers to the section of the Connecticut General Statutes which requires basically municipal improvements, catch-all, which goes on to define new roads, purchase of land, leasing, et cetera. To, so before the towns, in this case Board of Selectmen can go forward with making decisions on these types of projects, installing a road or accepting a road, all those things, building a community facility in this case. It's required to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review. Essentially, for this body to determine if it's consistent or inconsistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. It has nothing to do with the site design. This is no conditional approvals. You simply issue a favorable or non-favorable referral based upon consistency with the POCB. If you don't issue a favorable referral, the only difference is it requires any subsequent action by the Board of Selectmen to be, instead of simple majority, super majority.
So two out of three, it overrule?
So it doesn't, it doesn't, this is not an approve or denial of the project. This is also not, the commissions will bite at the apple. In this particular case, as I'm sure it will be explained, the project, once it's designed, will come back to the commission for a formal review, like anything else. So you look at site plan, you look at egress and ingress and grading and wetlands and all of those things still come through the special permit process. So the only thing that's happening tonight is to determine that construction is consistent or not with the POCB. In a nutshell.
Okay, we understand. All right. Okay, having said that.
And so we do have, I mean, Erica's going to speak to it and also Mike and Koo is.
All right, Mike, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Good evening. I emailed these remarks to Mike.
You want to say your name and review and all the usual stuff?
Sure. Yes, thank you for that reminder. Koo, Clover Springs Drive and Chairman of the School Building Committee. I emailed Mike Tomato this evening, these remarks, so that you don't have to try to capture them in exact detail. And for the benefit of the secretary, I'll just paraphrase them tonight in this. As most of you probably know, the School Building Committee has been working for about two years to study and evaluate things based on the charge of the School Building Committee. Over the course of the last two School Building Committee meetings, which were just last week, there were two notable motions approved. On February 1st, in an eight-two vote, it was moved to recommend a single new school option on a new piece of property. And at a subsequent special meeting on Friday, February 3rd, it was voted to add the option for the a question for the referendum that if the first one was approved, in other words, the new school was approved by the taxpayers, then there was also an option to add an auditorium if the taxpayers so chose. That's what's led us to be here tonight to start the 824 process. In the document that I sent to Mike, I highlighted pages of the Plan of Conservation and Development that the, in our review, we believe helps to justify that this project is in concert with what the Plan of Conservation and Development is looking for. And I'll pick just a couple of the highlights unless you really want me to read all of it in detail. But I picked, I went through and found things such as in the very beginning, the introduction, it says that there's through significant public input. I'm sorry, our committee feels through significant public input that this is part of what is referred to in the POCD as communities consensus for its future. And that plays out further in the POCD, also ties in with the work that the SBC has done to seek public input, which has been through mailers, through community forums, through present to speak at our meetings, through a special email address and a survey that was sent out. All of those things supported in the majority of those responses to move forward in this manner. So we believe it's in concert with the community's consensus for its future. If you skip through my notes to page, there's a note about page 75 in the POCD where it talks specifically about community facilities. Notably, there's a passage that says near-term needs in the POCD education. School enrollments have declined significantly and the inefficiency of maintaining two facilities for grades pre-K through A has been recognized. Regionalization was considered but not supported. Issue is whether to consolidate to one facility. Neither facility is perfect for this approach or build a new facility. And the last bullet point says a new facility would maximize state reimbursement and allow for meeting other needs such as a potential gymnasium, auditorium, meeting space, recreational fields, parking, ADA compliance, et cetera. So those are a couple of the highlights. And then at the end of the document, I made a note that there has been a lot of discussion in town about if we were to move to this new school option, what would happen with Hall School? I think that's a concern for almost every different board, commission and for a lot of the townspeople. And I guess I just wanted to comment to this board, in reading through the POCD, there actually are opportunities with the reuse of Hall School to, and maybe even Center School, to continue to work with the POCD. And those reuses are certainly within the vision of the POCD. And then the very end of my document is two attachments or two images, I should say. And those images are images that have been in the public previously. They're basically a concept plan or a test fit of using the new piece of property for the school. And they are by no means a final design. They're not for permit. They were just basically a test fit. But if you look at those in the purpose of the 824 review, the intent is to use that area of the property that's shown in those two drawings. And some of the reasoning for using that area is it's the ideal spot for siting the school as far as elevations, staying away from wetlands. It also allows us to set the building back from the street, which is consistent with the POCD to maintain the rural character by not having the building close to the road or other people's houses. And it also allows us to keep a buffer, which is also a request of the family that's selling the property, that we maintain a buffer on what would be, I guess, probably sort of south and east sides of that property where the development area would be close to the back of houses on Glass Factory Road and a couple of properties on Route 74. So those drawings, again, are not final design, but they give you some orientation and would allow you to see where we are proposing that we would locate the development. It also will show you that if you look through the plan and you look at areas such as the natural diversity database and areas of historical significance and other things that are recognized by the POCD, that this particular area of development on the lot does avoid those areas, because a couple of those areas do overlap the lot in portion, not in totality. So I guess I'd leave it at that and see if there are any questions that you want to ask me. Take it from there.
Yeah, any talk of Hall School or Center at this point is kind of premature, isn't it? You know, that's nothing to do with this project, that speculation about what may happen possibly in the future.
Correct. Just because it's been a lot of public feedback, we just wanted to make, we wanted to address that we can continue to follow the POCD in future planning as well.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, it's John Tien. I'm attending on Zoom tonight. Are these materials available online where I could pull them up?
If I had an email for you, I could send them to you on email, or if Mike Tomato wants to email them to you, he probably has your email. Or I could screen share it, but then we'd have to go through all four pages of it on screen.
I just, as soon as I got them, I just posted them online. So if you hit the link online with everything else, you should see a new folder there for 824 referral.
Thank you, Mike.
When I click through, though, on the meeting materials, I'm not seeing it. I see February 7th, okay, 824 referral. I don't see a 75-page document in here. That's what I was referring to.
No, I'm sorry, I was picking up, I highlighted page numbers.
Okay.
It's a, it's a four-page document. You'll see page 75 in it.
Okay.
Page 75 is on page two, that reference.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Mike?
No. What is this? For the, for a school for 400 students, what is the lot required that maximizes state contribution?
The formula would come out to approximately 19 acres. So in the case of this, it's about a third of this piece of property. Of course, not all of the property would necessarily be deemed as buildable or usable. As you can see in those highlights, there's a section that is, at least at this point, is mapped as potential wetlands. Obviously, we haven't done delineation yet on the property. But obviously, that point on the property is sort of the higher point and sort of the prime piece, which is actually what makes this lot attractive. One of the things that makes it attractive.
Mike, what kind of considerations been given into traffic up in that area with the drop-offs, the two times a day when a school's pretty busy?
Sure, so within the lot, that particular design, you show that test fit does provide two separate loops for parent drop-off and bus drop-off. The reason for that not only is safety on the site, but also to make sure the line of those vehicles that backs up has enough stacking space in the driveway. You'll see the driveway is pretty long. So the idea was to make sure the stacking space was on the property, not on the public road. And also where that driveway comes out onto Glass Factory Road is on what is sort of the one straight stretch of Glass Factory Road and is some distance from the curves. And the idea was that would be about our best sightline. Now, if you're talking about traffic out at the intersections, the increased.
Referring to mainly, Mike, I could see that the actual development looks like it accommodates the buses and the parents' cars or whatever. Yep. It's actual Glass Factory in Adamic and out to 32 and so forth.
Sure, so that's been a lot, there's been a lot of discussion in public feedback about that and on the School Building Committee. Part of the process with the state to go through once, assuming that the referendum is passed by the people and then the application is filed in June, which is when the window with the state is each June. So the goal would be to file this June. And when we file that, somewhere within that process, there will be a demand coming back from the state for a traffic study. At that point, we will be through our purchased consulting services. We'll be on a different contract at that point, but through the contract we will next have, we'll probably have to engage with a firm to get a traffic study done based on what the state requires. There'll be some consultation with DOT certainly. And our assumption is there'll be study of both of those intersections, 32 at Adamic and 74 at at Glass Factory Road. And then we'll have to consider what the recommendations of that are. I know project budget isn't so much your concern, but we did anticipate this. And the current consultant we're working with, the owner's project manager, has factored in a contingency into the budget. So the budget that's currently being presented does accommodate a reasonable contingency that we presume will cover unless there are extraordinary needs. But it does anticipate we may have to do some sightline or some reconstruction at those two intersections.
Thank you, Mike.
Was there any effort made as far as reaching out for other landowners or competitive bids?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say the term competitive bids in that, but as far as looking at other land, there was significant effort. I believe the matrix that we used had, if I remember right, started with somewhere around 126 or 127 pieces of property. We did work and our consultant also worked intensely with the zoning office to first identify pieces of property that were vacant, and then we looked at pieces of property that were for sale, pieces that weren't for sale. We looked at town-owned property, for example, the Youngerman Parcel out on Route 320 North, which had been purchased decades ago with the idea of it being a school. Unfortunately, that was not conducive to development for multiple reasons. But we did start with a list of over 120 parcels and just kept narrowing it down and narrowing it down. And whether it was grade issues or utilities being too far away, one of the things we have to do is bring in three-phase power. One of the parcels that the town owns was out on Moose Metal Road where three-phase power was miles and miles away, and it had a slope issue. So there were a lot of, there were a lot of parcels that were evaluated and we kept narrowing it down to things that were in a reasonable location in town that made sense for ease of development, close to utilities, all of those factors.
So even if you narrowed it down to like three, those landowners weren't consulting. You went all the way down to like one line. Basically, right?
Well, we did, we did walk some properties with the landowners, some were for sale. And we also went on other properties without the landowners, but with permission that were for sale. And they were eliminated, for example, to, one of the parcels we walked early, we walked with the seller. It was a similar price. I don't remember the exact price, but it was a similar price to this piece. And if I remember right, it was smaller. And, but the location it was in and the slope were both concerns. And it also then sold before we could move. We were early in the process at the time. We walked another piece that's for sale on the opposite end of town, up along Interstate 84. And that was, again, I believe, and I can't remember, I'm going off the top of my head right now. I think somewhat of a similar price, somewhat of a similar size. It's a property that's been previously subdivided. But the location that's so close to the Love's Truck Stop and the interstate did not seem conducive to the POCD or what we were looking for, for the right environment for a school full of children.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Anything else from the commission? I've got one question. With the proposed site being somewhat restricted in regards to hydraulic soil conditions, is there any concern for water runoff or any type of just ground absorption rate?
We haven't, we haven't done testing and evaluation to that level yet. But one of the things that the consultant felt was valuable about this property is because of the size of it, it does allow opportunities for onsite stormwater mitigation or management principles. So we would have the opportunity, because of the amount of space, to be able to work with making sure that we accounted for perhaps a soil type that doesn't have good drainage, for example. Because the area that we primarily would be looking to develop is probably just under 20 acres. And it's in total 65 acres. If you eliminate the parts that aren't good to work with for that, we would still have available, I don't know, you might want to call it buffer to work with. We would have, we would have land left to accommodate some sort of retention systems or management systems.
Mike, is that built into the contingency in case it turns more extensive, like if the drainage is poor? Is any of that factored into that contingency you mentioned?
The, the project contains, the project budget that is the budget that's being tossed around publicly does contain millions in contingency. There's a percentage, there are two categories of contingency. I don't remember exactly the dollars and how the consultant calculated it, but they're a firm that does school construction all the time. They used current pricing, current common practices. As a matter of fact, they're the same firm that just is working on the Mansfield Middle School right now, which is almost completed. Our, our elementary school, I guess. So they, they feel that they've put a reasonable contingency into the project. Certainly, if things get really into an area that's unexpected, we could exhaust the contingency. But I have checked back even in the last few days, because this is an important topic for us as we're getting close to the referendum. And the consultant still feels very firmly that he's accounted for any reasonable expectation.
Hey, Mike, it's, it's John Tien again. If I'm looking at these ball fields, it looks like they're almost directly in the backyard of those three lots right there. Are there going to be lights on that or anything? Is that going to be a problem for the folks that live there?
So there's no, there's no definitive design documents right now, obviously, because we would have to get past referendum to hire an architect to do the design. But the, at the request, even before we get talking about like, you know, going for permit and zoning regulations, there was already a request from the seller that we provide a certain amount of buffer to those neighbors. So if you're looking at that on the Glass Factory side, there are, I think, three or four lots that are but that area close to the fields. So there would be a natural buffer in there. And then as you turn that corner, sort of upward and left on the drawing, the lots that come in from Route 74, we would maintain a buffer there as well. Certainly, if the discussion came up about lighting, it would, you know, we would be working, obviously, within the regulations for full cutoff lighting and things like that. And at this point, I don't, I have not heard any discussion about lighting on the fields, but that doesn't mean that people won't bring it up once we get into design. So I'm sure we'd have to come back to that conversation.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
We have one more question. Do you happen to have an idea of what the average water consumption for the school and maintaining all the fields actually is?
No, it was, Hall School was previously operated on wells, as was Center School, onsite wells. So if you can extrapolate anything from that, the demand, it can be accommodated by the local, you know, by local wells of those schools. Both of those schools have, over the last, I don't know, 15, 20 years, moved on to some sort of a municipal water-type system. Hall School is getting water from the Talend side and Center School gets water from the same system that supplies the senior housing. So we could certainly, because those are on systems, we could get a gallon rate for you. We could find that information out, but that's not something we've talked about.
All right, I guess I just noted, because we're going to have more fields that are going to be, need to maintain and things of that nature. So it'd be nice to have an idea of what we could estimate the consumption would be, larger facility, everything together, under one half, all the kids and just the facility in general.
So I will say that the previous, the high point of Wellington School enrollment was well into the 700s. And at that time, we were running both schools on wells and we were not watering any of the fields. We do some of the subservice under some of the fields, happens to be the Leach Field, which may be helping those fields a little bit. But we're now down to around 400 students. And so we're almost at half. And so between the two existing schools, we were probably maybe 300 and 500 in those schools, the way the grades were divided. And we were doing that successfully on wells and we were not watering the fields. I don't know that someone would ask, maybe someone will ask for irrigation on these fields, but at this time, none of the Wellington fields are irrigated, including at River Road Park.
Well, Mike, I have a question.
Sure.
The, what's the maximum capacity of students in this proposed school?
Because of the restrictions on the formulation for the state reimbursement, we've been trying to keep the square footage as close to what the state's calculation is, so we don't get a penalty on that reimbursement. The square footage in this school is designed to accommodate essentially the, we had to hire a enrollment prediction. And in that prediction, I think the high point was 419 students, maybe. And so this school is designed to accommodate the 419. Again, we don't have a, we don't have an actual design, but the square footage and the fit test is to accommodate essentially 419. And so certainly, there's some flexibility in how the school would be occupied and the intent would be design classrooms as flexible as possible. So that if there is somewhat of a rise or a drop, it wouldn't mean either empty classrooms or people having to take their education in the hallway. So, so I guess the answer to that is the school is designed for approximately 415, but it's flexible to a certain percentage beyond that. And again, here's another advantage of a piece of property with some space is should we need to expand if development changes in town or whatever, and that 419 over the next 40, 50, 60 years becomes 519 or 619. If we had to add on to the school, there's room on this property to do that.
How many years in the past was it when there were 700 students?
I don't remember the number, but it was quite a while ago.
That was my grade. Well, we're talking over 30 years.
Right, so certainly, you know, there are trends and the enrollment study was done. It goes out about eight years from now and, and gave that number of a prediction. Of course, we're not building, we're not looking to build a building for eight years. Obviously, no public facility should be designed to only last eight years. But because of how the state reimbursement works, we also can't build it based on what we think the population will be in 50 years, because we have no way to predict that. So we're working with the constraints of the state formula and trying to design it as flexible as possible, so we can accommodate variations over 40 or 50 or 60 years that we hopefully will still use this building.
Does the contingency reserve include any money if water does have to be brought into the facility?
I don't know that the contingency would, I don't know that the contingency is big enough to bring water all the way from, you'd have to figure out where it's coming from first. Is it going to come from Talend? Is it going to come from the system on Old Farms Road? You know, there would have to be some work done at that point. This is planned for drilling wells on the site.
My question, Mike, would be, with this, if you go onto a property like this, be interested to know how deep those wells are for the residential people there and what their flow rate is in those wells. And maybe that would give you an idea to extrapolate out and see if there is enough water on that on that property to facilitate your needs.
I, I assume that would, you know, we'd have to have somebody who has greater expertise than the committee members to look into that. I'm sure there's, just based on living in Wellington all my life, there's probably a combination of drilled wells and dug wells on that street. So we, you know, to get that answer, it might even require drilling.
Well, it's, it's one thing, and I think this came up to the forefront. Several have been talking about this with the 84 warehouse. And that discussion about how much water they needed per day and how sustainable that was. So I'm, I'm just asking the question. Hasn't got to do anything about the school, it's just how much water is there and is it going to be enough for you?
Well, it's a great question and I, trust me, I would love to have an answer to it, I've just laid on you.
Yeah, I'd like to have that answer too. We all, we all take for granted, we're going to build the house, we're going to build something, we drill into the ground and water comes out. But that's not always the case. You know, it's there for a while, but how much, how fast is your recharge? That's the thing that I have in the back of my mind all the time.
Right.
Especially in dry years.
And the impacted neighbors.
Any impacted neighbors? All right, further questions, comments? You know, so with Mike? Do you wanna speak to your? Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
So the memo that you have before you, um, is a proposed, uh, resolution for your consideration that would be necessary. Um, in your review of the, um, statute eight dash two four. Uh, as, as presented there, the, um, motion was drafted by our bond counsel. Um, and you'll see a range of. Square footage. In the facility that would account for, um, a two. Part question at referendum, if a school project were to pass. And an auditorium as a separate item were to pass, that's the reasons for footage. If it's just a school project, it would be the seventy-six only square foot. What's the seating capacity for an eight thousand square foot auditorium? So the state will pay for half of the number of students. This, I believe, is proposed at Mike or Bill can correct it. I believe it's four hundred and two, or a little over four hundred seats. Um, so in, in any auditorium project using state, um, grant funds, it will only be for half of your, um, student body.
Any quick questions? Mike hasn't already gone through, we've let him ask.
Actually, there's one thing I just wanna add, because we got a couple of questions in, in the, uh, office about it, um. I, I've already touched on the process and that this is a referral, it's not, not approval or anything else. But I, there has been some confusion about the process in, um, what the zoning regs say. We're not reviewing the zoning regs here, we're reviewing P O C D, but, um, educational governmental uses are a special permit use in the regs. So the property sits currently within the R A zone. Within the R A zone, those uses are allowed by a special permit. So this would not require a zone change. The uses are already listed as, as to be allowed. Um, so. We, we've got some feedback and comments from folks about wanting to participate in a public hearing related to a zone change for school project. And so I just wanna be kinda clear that. That wouldn't be required, but there would be a public hearing.
I, I, I read the eight twenty-four statute three times today.
Yeah.
Just to. Really understand it. And we don't use it that often, maybe once, once a year. Uh, busy year. So.
And, and really, the intent is to make sure that you have, the, the board of selectmen is not making decisions that, you know, would. Provide for roads to be constructed in areas that the planning zoning commission had said, wait, we think it's best for this or that. So. Because these are not decisions you make, and in, in the number of communities. The towns themselves are exempt from zoning regs. So in, in another place, a school project would not come before you because the towns have exempted themselves from regs. So in this case, because that's not what's going on, you wanna provide for that initial review, so that there's not a conflict at the ninety yard line. When they're coming back with a full site design.
Or for anybody out there who thinks like, you know, the planning zoning commission is gonna push it out to all this, like, whatever, that's not what this is all about, you know, that's, uh. It's called go out and vote, you know, when, uh, when it goes to referendum and vote yes or no, depending on how you feel about it. Anything from? Anybody? Any, anyone online, any commissioners have anything to say? Yeah, Andy's there. So is John. Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. So I would assume we'd make a motion, like, as usual.
Yeah, so they, so the memo that you all should have. It's got the provided resolutions, so this is obviously for a. Positive referral. So, um, I think really the, uh, the middle paragraph there, there is. One you're, you'd be looking at.
All right, I'll make a motion pursuant to section eight twenty-four of the. General statutes of Connecticut, the planning and zoning commission of the town of Wellington approves the construction. Of a new approximately seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty to eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty square foot pre-kindergarten through a grade eight school. And related site improvements and work to be centrally located within the town. On land or an interest in land to be acquired for such purchase. Any discussion?
One second.
Okay. Call in favor?
Hi.
Okay, Rebecca Stain, uh, propose. You, Doug Roberts opposes. What do we have for you, Andy? You're muted.
Sorry, I can't make, I'm struggling here. Well, my only. I, under discussion, uh, if I read the eight twenty-four, you said you read it, if I understand it right. The only consideration we have here is the acquisition of land at the location. We're not approving anything other than that under eight dash twenty-four. Am I incorrect? Am I misinterpreting what the eight dash twenty-four is?
You're determining whether it fits in with the plan of conservation and development.
Right, but not the size of the school, not anything other than the acquisition of land and the location. That's the way I, that's the way I was observing the regulation, so. Um. In your motion, you mentioned specifically size and everything. If that size changes, are we putting ourselves in, in a? Bad light because something is different? Again, I, I'm just reading it right now. It's just, uh, eight dash twenty-four says. Da-da-da, municipal improvements. First, section one is located road. Section two is locate, acquire land for school. It doesn't say whether or not we're approving the design. Or anything else, other than just the location. And the land acquisition. And I. I, I guess I would counsel that we confine ourselves a little bit to just that. I don't know, just a thought.
So the resol, I, I mean, the resolution you have before you is, uh, assuming, um, a, a project that moves forward. To, uh, O S C G R, which is the Office of School Construction Grants Review. Um, these are very specific ordered documents. That will be required and motions will be required, um, if each order commissioned as the process moves forward. So if you were to approve. Um, and vote favorably at that stage, that's the language that will be required. It does not hold you to. Um, the square footage, it, it does say approximately, but that is based on the, um, specific. Project that has been put forth by the school building committee to build a new school on a new site. The range in square footage there accounts for the possibility of a referendum question adding an auditorium. Otherwise, it would be very specific in nature to approximate, and it does say approximate, so you are not, uh, again, approving a specific square footers school.
Okay. Wh- where does that come from? Where, where, where is this requirement that we? That we approve that level of detail? That, that's not, I, I'm not interpreting the regulation that way. I just, I'm not challenging you, I just, just for my own education.
So I think that if, you know, I'm not bound counsel, but, but if I were to look at this one year from now or eight years from now, whenever. The project moves forward or doesn't move forward, decisions are made. You want to make sure there's a nexus between whatever decision the commission made and, and. Having some level of comfort that you actually reviewed what was being proposed. So if the motion was silent and everything. You might not be able to ascertain exactly what type of a project was put before you, setting, they're trying to capture that so that it's clear. We didn't tell them we were gonna build a, a building that was thirty thousand square feet in this little corner of the property. That there was some transparency in what the overall use of the land was going to be for you to make that decision.
But that makes sense. Thanks for explaining it.
And this specific, um, motion is, um, one that would be required from the state for the grants to be, to, once we file the grant, there are certain. Um, steps that have to be recorded very specifically in order to be awarded the grant.
Oh, that makes sense to me. Walter, good motion. Thank you.
I think we need to know what was.
What is your vote, Andy? Yes or no?
My vote is yes. My vote, yes.
Okay. So we got everybody. All right. All right. Yeah, next, moving on to section two, uh, item two, section eleven. Dot oh one, home occupation discussion.
Okay, so, um, one of the things we have on our radar. Um, in terms of reviewing and amending our regulations. Has been the home occupation regulation. Um. And this was. Made evident to some stuff that we, some applications that we got earlier this year, um. There's some concerns brought up by the public. So, yeah, so, yeah, so this is. A memo that I typed up, kind of going over what we have currently on the books, um. I laid out some. Regulations in other towns. For home occupations that you guys can kinda review. And then, kind of just to start the discussion of where we wanna go with this regulation. Um, we also have to address, um, some things. For example. Um. Past, we've required yearly renewals for all our patients, which we're no longer allowed to do. I think we talked about that. Earlier. At some point, um, but that's something we have to address going forward. So. Currently, right now, the way the regulation is written. Home occupations are defined in section three, in the definition section, um, and it lays out. Some things that they can't be, like dog channels. Animal hospitals, automotive service. Et cetera. Um. The first way of going about getting. Home occupation. Um, would be by certificate of zoning compliance. If we see in green there, if you can meet those set of criteria. You can be issued a certificate of zoning compliance by staff. And if not. You can't meet those criteria. Then you have to go about it through a special permit process and. The regulations lay out. Another set of criteria, you can see over in the right side in yellow. Which you have to meet. Um. So that's pretty much what we have currently. Um. On the books. Uh, on the second page here. I've laid out some. Other towns' regulations. You see Stafford's regulation, Arlington's regulation, and Talon's regulation. Um. Stafford and Arlington kind of. Is a one-size-fits-all approach where. Um. You can meet set of criteria and be issued, um. A zoning permit through staff, otherwise you have to go to the commission, um. And then Talon's. That's kind of like a tier system where they define, um, home offices, which are allowed with the zoning permit, an administrative zoning permit through staff. Um, they define a minor home occupation, um. And then they define a major home occupation, which requires second permit. Um. So those are some examples of what other towns are doing. Um. And then, on the last page, I talked about. Um, places we can go with this, kind of explaining again what other towns are doing and. There is some concern. Brought up by the public earlier in the year, um, so kind of exploring. Whether the current regulation or criteria provide adequate protections to nearby residential properties. Uh, and then again, we have to address the expiration. Um, issue and required renewals.
I think one of the things that we. Kind of have talked, we've talked about this a while, you know, for a while and, and, um, we do annual renewals. We've talked about sort of the renewal process that's been going on for many years and how it doesn't necessarily align with what the regulations say. And then there's been some. Variation in interpretation over the years about what qualifies and what doesn't. And so our regs talk about specific uses. You can't do this and you can do that, but we don't actually define sort of tangible limits, right? So you can have this use, but, but we don't have anything in the regs that talks about how big that can be before it's no longer appropriate. That was the main. Rub with the home occupation that we just saw, is that you don't have a line that says, okay, when you get this big, you're no longer a home occupation. When you have. You don't have, you know, can't have X amount of trucks or, you know, a building or X outdoor storage. We don't, we don't have those tangible. Pieces of visual evidence that really help us understand the, um, intensity of the use. Um, which was, which has been an issue for us in both demonstrating. In the renewals that there's compliance, because there's several properties in town, and I think if they came for a, a home occupation, do exactly what they're doing now. Today, not renewals. I don't know that the commission would probably say, yeah, you can do that. It mo- morphed over time.
How many complaints you get?
We have not a lot of complaints, but we have some recurring complaints about the same pieces of property, um. As Chris mentioned, the other thing we talked about is exploration. So if we issue a special permit. To a property for a home occupation, that permit runs with the land. It's just like a variance. So you can tell them you need to come back every year, but. They really don't have to, and you can't say, well, no, and they don't get it anymore. If they say they wanna have a home occupation and it involves putting in a fence, building a building, or doing some type of site improvement. And they do it in year one, and then in year three, the commission says. Because of some determination that we may you no longer have the right to operate, and they've spent two hundred thousand dollars on their property to do what was required of them. There's an issue with that, um, so. The, the more. The, there's probably more control if we develop those standards, put them into the regulations. And issue them as a commission approval, but not a special permit, let's say, because then it doesn't run with the land forever. So if the use terminates, the property sells. You no longer have this approval that sits on the land records forever. That is, was issued, you know, under a different set of regs or under a different, um, set of criteria. So what a lot of towns are doing is creating basically a three-tier system. What you can do, what the commission needs to look at, and what the commission needs to look at with the public hearing. Um. And requesting some type of, uh, compliance review. Maybe that, you know, they get it year one and they come back for a year to de- just to demonstrate compliance. And then they come back in three years and then they come back in four or whatever. The idea is over time as they continue to operate, they get. They get more time before they have to come back. Um. But. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a little bit challenging, I think, as you saw, so we, we wanna, we wanna try to. Fix that.
So in order to facilitate that. If you started to define. Different home occupations. Kind of size-wise. That lead to necessity of, uh. The town stepping up. Buying a piece of property and having a place for a business park are those people who. Have used their home occupation or home office. As incubator and now want to take the next step? I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't that be? A logical assumption that if the town is. Laying out the different sizes of home occupation, that they shouldn't have. A place. To further nurture these local businesses so they can expand and thrive.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, um. Something that you're, like, we're seeing all across the state is like contractor flex space, basically like a. Uh, three or four unit, kind of like a big storage, you know, like a, uh. Like a storage facility with just bay doors and each contractor has one specific place. They can get their mail, they can store some equipment and they have a truck and they can park it there. And it's, it's basically, um, it's not office space, it's not finished, but it's a spot that's not at home, that they can, they can have a small business. Because you're right, when a business is established, they. They don't actually know how long or, or if they'll be successful, how long it'll take, how successful it'll be. You know, so overnight they go from having one truck to three trucks, from no employees to three employees, from a whole bunch of material to none. And it, and. They don't necessarily have the same level of income that you might have seen fifteen years ago, where it made total sense to go and rent a space that you could keep things in, so stuff comes home.
Talon has something like that in their, uh, industrial park, where there's a. Tallinn has something like that in their industrial park, where there's a building, and I think there's six or eight divisions in that one building. You know, four on the front or in the back, and everybody parks their trucks there. They have their office, they have a little manufacturing space or whatever they need to make their business work.
But, and that's owned by their town or a leasing company?
I'm not sure how that works. I mean.
All, all this stuff comes down, who's gonna pay for it, who's gonna invest in it?
Well, and, and, and again, you know.
There's a lot of companies will like build a building based on their needs.
Right.
And then they'll sell it back, lease it back from that company. So that it's not on their.
Business park, there are stand. I mean, Gurler has a good-sized facility there, and then you have smaller other businesses that have their own unit, how Tallinn came to have that land, or how they developed that area. Something that might, we might want to look into, or somebody might want to look into, to understand how that's facilitated. But, you know, I, I think what we heard from this, the eighty-four warehouse thing, people are interested in businesses coming to Wellington. Well, in some case, maybe the talent has to be the one to facilitate someplace so these companies can locate. So they don't have to go out on their own and find a little piece here and a little piece there. It could come to us, we could say, yes, you're gonna so-and-so is gonna build such and such a building. I don't care if it's a second party, no different than what FedEx is doing. Put the building up and it gets divvied up. But the town has made that available. I just think that the town needs to get more involved in this whole process and not have to go on point and say, oh, you're too big, you can't be here in this R eighty zone.
Yeah, one thing we gotta be careful with tweaking these regulations, we don't make it, you know, more business.
Oh, absolutely.
With that, because you know that a lot of people are struggling and everything, and you have to throw in one more nail add on this.
And, you know, like, right now, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I haven't figured it. How many permits we renew on an annual basis? Because, you know, every year, we, we let them know, hey, FYI, you know, we need to, uh, permit, they, they go online. So if you're in a guy you have a computer and you work out of a, an office in your house, and you have employees, you know, it would be if we don't anything. You're still every single year submitting an application to, to us to renew your permit, and perhaps feels like it's a little bit unnecessary to have all these home businesses asking for permission to continue to do this when there's no evidence. So I think one of the ways we can, we can address that is like many towns, you have a home occupation and you have a home office. And if someone maintains a home office, that's not something that requires review and application and all these other things. Now, you get to the next step, you, you fall into that review category. But, yeah, you know, we in some of the work we've done, EDC, there's probably more businesses registered here or, than you might think. It's not hundreds, but.
There's a number of them. When I was on EDC years ago, we made a book with all the local.
Yeah.
There's a lot of like a home. I saw where just a home office, some are more than that. It's just.
Yeah.
There's quite a bit.
I mean, EDC's, um, business grant program was just under twenty recipients. There were twenty businesses that qualified as being in Wellington, met the criteria, demonstrated impact that you are not just somebody that has a mailbox here or whatever. So you whittle it down between, you know, different business types, et cetera. But it was just under two hundred thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars that now to, to these businesses. So it's, um, not insignificant.
So how do we want to approach this? Do I take stab at like, you know, point if it's up, maybe a little bit more protection, so?
My, my personal, I mean, I obviously, I work in Tallinn, so I have, I have, um, some experience with their systems and their, and the three-tiered system with a minor home occupation, a major home occupation, and a whole business seems to work pretty well. We have not had conflict with those being disruptive to neighbors once they get established. And it's, it's easier to determine based on the criteria of when something has gone beyond what was originally approved.
And this wouldn't affect anybody currently in business.
Right.
Because they're operating under what we have now. So this is for anything new.
The only thing it would do is if you have someone that was running a smaller business and they started to grow, they would fall into whatever the new categories were. But the other thing we can kind of do with this, which Tallinn's regs kind of dovetail nicely with, um, is aligning it with the commercial vehicle reg. Is if you allow commercial vehicles based upon that definition, but it would conflict with home occupation regs or vice versa, it can be a little bit cumbersome to deal with. So I think we, if you sort of are interested to see how it would look, I think what we would want to do is take the existing criteria and lay it out into a three-tiered system, and then try to build out some additional standards and just kind of see what that looks like.
Are the different tiers established by like revenue or by impact?
Impact.
So traffic.
Right.
Traffic is a big thing.
Right.
Probably the potential disturbed neighbor, things like that, depending on what, what's on the site.
Vehicles, equipment, outdoor storage.
Like any contractor is gonna potentially have a commercial vehicle, you know, sitting on site, whether it's a pickup truck or a you know, small van, you know.
So let's say a contractor, he, he starts with a pickup truck, and then he gets a dump truck, and then he gets a trailer, he gets an excavator, right? Um, but he's got forty acres of land, and he's got this set way out the road, and he can put screening in there, and he wants to buy three more pieces of equipment. Um, is, is he still able to do that, or is he forced out?
I think the way that we look at it is, if he has the truck and the trailer to start, let's say, then he comes in under a minor, and then it turns out he wants to buy a bunch of other pieces of equipment. Well, now, because you've got some of that more exterior visibility and potential impact, granted, he's got a lot of property, but, you know, based on the, the adding of those additional pieces of equipment, and that may now trigger the major home occupation. So then it would come to the commission for a public hearing. We could talk about screening, we can talk about idling, we can talk about what kind of road is this off of, right? You're gonna have a triaxle dump truck coming up and down the road ten times a day. How many employees do you have that are gonna park on the property? So as they grow, it may not be, well, you can't grow, it may be, well, now that you're growing, you need to go to the commission. Right, yeah.
Careful with this.
So when does a business that has a large chunk of land, zone R eighty have to come and get it rezoned or apply for rezoning? You know, it seems like in Wellington, we're really proud of our, the way we handle the zoning.
So they, when you come in under this, because there, as a home occupation, has got to constantly remain accessory to the single-family use. So they would be a free existing non-conforming use and subject to the, that section of the regs. So an expansion of the non-conformity would be prohibited, just like anything else. An intensification of that non-conformity would be allowable. So they, if they were an outlier and they were still falling within that zone, then they might want to go to a zone change if that was appropriate. But if they're in the middle of an R eighty zone, it probably isn't gonna happen. Um, but because they're not falling under a home occupation, this, they wouldn't be subject to that. And I, and I actually, I mean, we have, we haven't gone farther than this, but when Chris and I discussed it, we're not looking to create new standards that would somehow infringe upon what someone's doing now. I think what we want to do is establish a ceiling, because there really isn't one now. So, um.
Well, I think that's important that we, that we massage this, the simple fact that nothing against newcomers, but it seems like the people that are yelling the loudest are the people that have been here the shortest period of time. That's just my observation over the past couple of years. You know, I don't consider myself a townie, but I've been here thirty-two years.
I've been here like twenty-seven hours.
So.
Live a little bit.
Well. So that, that's, this is, this is the thing that, and that's why I take and I mention and ensure having an industrial park isn't on the town's radar. However, if you want to be pro-business in a community, you have to swallow it, put out some money, buy a piece of property, and make that available for business development. That way you can choose where you buy your piece of property. So it's you're not having this back and forth every time somebody wants to do something business-wise. And if we're gonna massage this, I think we need to keep items like that in the back of our mind.
Well, I think we massage this, we do it carefully, because we really don't want to put a burden on, on some of these.
Oh, no.
Businesses, it's just that, that is not what we want to be known for.
No, no. I'm just, I'm just saying, in the future, as things grow, as property gets divided and built on, there's more and more opportunities for conflict.
Like, for instance, you can, you can have some like, you know, farm or something, him sitting there with equipment on it and so forth, in there for eighty years. Build subdivision, yeah, sure, ways away, all of a sudden, they even start complaining, because now they
There you go.
Oh, this junk pile, you know, it's like, you know, here, and it's bending us and.
Well, it's, it's something that they're not used to.
But I'm, I'm pretty interested by this one, because myself and one of my good neighbors were both small contractors. And what we pride ourselves on is actually trying to house our stuff and make it as least noticeable as possible. You know, I have an outbuilding specifically to put my stuff in. He's trying to slowly uh, build himself, repairing an outbuilding to put his stuff there. We both live very far off the road, so that it's not actually seeing anybody. It's not to hide it, because we're doing something that's tedious, but we're trying to keep kind of the, the nature of our surrounding areas. And I, I'm, I'm just, I find it interesting, because we're like that tiered level, you know, um, I don't have any employees, it's myself. I have subcontractors, I have a limited amount of equipment. But if something small changes in the townside bumps me into a different tier, what is that also doing for a tax ramifications to me potentially too? You know, is this putting more stuff potentially on a grand list for my business? Yeah, we don't report. I came from Manchester, and Manchester did. They wanted every little line I didn't report, you know, so I'm just it's kind of a, I don't want to call it a scary thing, but it's, all right, is there something else that could come into play that would, you know, have people like myself try to like, okay, even stay smaller, because we're worried about what another ramification could be.
It was always a private property, you know.
Uh, true, you know, you're, you're right.
All right. So what are we gonna do with this tonight? You know, we got a discussion going, some thoughts out there.
I think we can, we, we can lay something out in a format that perhaps will kind of align what we're talking about. Certainly, yeah, nothing that, when we, every decision that this commission has made, except for the denial of the warehouse, has been business-friendly. Where the DC zone, the South Wellington Village area, I mean, everything has been moving in that direction. So we're certainly not gonna do anything that would be different from that now. Um, you know, but I think we, at the very least, need to fix this, the expiration issue, um, requiring these yearly renewals, because we can't do that. And, um, I think we want to just create some, at the very least, clear categories between the two. Maybe if you don't like third option or whatever, we can show you what it looks like, and you, you can tell us what you think. Um, but I think we at least want to fix the expiration issues and, and talk about if there needs to be some language in here, even at a high level, about, about screening, because right now, or not screening, uh, creating a ceiling. Um, because right now there isn't one, and, and that does create some conflict, because if you're a neighbor to one of these uses, you don't actually know how big it will, it will get. And one of the interpretations, which we've seen in multiple existing permits are this idea if I can't read the sign of a vehicle from the road, then there is no exterior evidence of the business. So you could have a, a triaxle dump truck, that has a very small sign, and it can be parked next to your house, but if, and the sign can't be read from the road, the story interpretation is, well, there's no exterior evidence of the business. I can't see that that's a business vehicle, but it's a triaxle. So that's what creates the conflict with the neighbors, because there's so, so much uncertainty.
Maybe it's a commuter vehicle, right?
I, maybe.
Awesome. How do, how do we address the, uh, self-occupation with the semi parked in the driveway?
That, those are questions you will have to answer. Do we want to create a situation where that wouldn't be allowed? Or do we want to say that any commercial vehicle in excess of well, XYZ? You know, needs to come aboard.
No, you know, we're touching on things.
You can decide it's allowed, you can decide it's prohibitive.
You just gotta be careful.
Oh, yeah. I, I would like to have my, work up something insofar as levels, something like we see in town. And maybe, I don't know, some of those, I'm, some of them have something to do with commercial vehicles as well. You know, um, something with, you have to draw a limit insofar as a commercial vehicle.
How many commercial vehicles does it down constitute a business, a full-scale business versus a?
Well, it, it, you know, you get two or three. It's, is this, when does it jump from a major home occupation to, you know, you, you need a bigger space, or is this needs to be?
And I think that's the only question that I, we really feel should, this commission should answer, because right now, it never does here. We don't, we don't, we, it, it, there never, there's nothing that's, if it gets to this point or, or whatever, it meets these criteria, then it's, it's deemed to be, you know, your request to continue to expand is, is no longer compatible with an R eighty zone.
Well, that was a question that was brought to us last fall.
Right.
You know, when does a home occupation become a commercial business?
And, you know, it's funny, because think about the entire process we went to evaluate whether or not someone can have chickens on their property. But, but, you know, we have all these criteria for sizes, and oh, if you want to have two horses, you've got to have this much property. But we don't have those same very tangible levels of review, so that everybody understands what the expectation is and how big something can grow before it can go from here to there. And even if it's regulated, even if you say, we want to look at this, it doesn't mean the process has to be complicated. The application fee doesn't have to be expensive, doesn't have to be a three-month process. There's ways to make it easy to do. Um, but right now, we, we don't have those, those criteria. So um, yeah, not, not looking to, to have the commission say this, you know, we'll solve everything tonight. But I, I think we want to at least put something together for you to decide if you like it or not.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan. Okay, let me do that. We have a discussion. I just like, I, I just want to be careful how much we, we impact.
There, there was another question that was coming up last fall, and over and over, and that was like the number of businesses the Apple can add. And.
A lot of them weren't even operating.
Right. So, I mean, if he wants to pay X amount of dollars to the state of Connecticut, they have a different license number or business entity tax. Who cares? Yes, but if it's not impacting the traffic or the neighbors, it shouldn't matter.
That's not terribly uncommon. We live one person with all these different entities and things they did over the years.
But it was, it was definitely a, a focal thing.
All right. No one finished businesses tonight under item S. Item G approval minutes. Item G approval minutes. All in favor? You getting Andy there?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Steven Hardey, now we go to the side. Alright, uh, H correspondence, number one, Connecticut land use law or land use agencies training.
So I, I think I've mentioned this before, there's, uh, every other year, the Connecticut Car Association puts on a. Land use training, which is sort of comprehensive, um, it's on a Saturday, uh, this one is on March the eleventh, I believe. Um, there's also one that Clear is doing, Center for Land Use Education and Research. Those are one hour each webinars, which are free and online, um, as of January one, everybody has to do four hours per year. So, um, there's no reporting, it's basically, i- i- the town has to track it and certify that you've met the criteria, but we don't do any reporting elsewhere. Um, so if anyone's interested in going to the Saturday one, it's a webinar all day from home, when? Come on, Saturday, March eleventh? It's, it's all day.
How many hours do we need to meet this? Is there anything four hours long?
Well, so the Center for Land Use Education, those are three, those webinars are, uh, there are three of them total, they're one hour each. And they, they fit within the criteria, so if you watch those. At your own pace, they're an hour each, um, those would get you ninety percent of the way. And then between now and December, you have to pick up another hour, maybe even a half an hour. Um, so they're, but they're less comprehensive, um, the, the Saturday one is, is. Top to bottom, you know, really, really well put on training, Ken Slater, Richard Roberts, all the.
How many hours long?
Uh, it's probably like a nine to.
Okay, who pays for it?
We, we'll pay for it, you know, so I can send the brochure out, you can look at the topics.
Can you send it?
Yeah.
Alright.
Mike, that, that one class will, um, uh, satisfy the need for continuing education for the whole year.
Yeah, because I believe they're gonna cover all the various buckets of things that, that you'll need to deal with bias. predisposition, affordable housing, land use legislation, predis, on lists of interest, so.
Training help. Virtual, okay, yes, send it.
They don't have some way to watch it later in training.
I can, I can try, and I can see if there will be a recording. Um, they typically get like six to eight hundred people that join it and they, they send you the book, you know, the land use book, which is a really awesome resource. Um, but I will see if there's a recording for people.
So you're new to the commission, you should go.
I have thirty-two hours to do in two weekends, so I have much more time. Required to be at.
Where you have to do it for our pos then or something.
Yeah.
The other thing we might be able to do is if I, we register you, I mean, I'm gonna be attending, so. I can see if, even if, if as a, as an attendee, I can record it. Um, and, and that may, that may qualify, so I'll send it out and then, uh, I'll, I'll try to get some answers out.
Alright, so you're gonna get that out, boss? This, March eleventh?
March eleventh.
Alright.
Let's move by the office and pick a copy of that up or what? Bring you down, bring the March eleven thing, so if we register, I'll, I'll email you the little brochure which just says all the stuff, if we register you, then they will.
Mail you an actual copy of the entire.
I'll need to tell you, I'm gonna do it, fill something out.
We'll, we'll do all that, just tell.
Okay, we, we need to let you know whether we can do it.
My other trainer will let me like tag to me.
One earbud in one ear and one earbud in the other.
Alright, sounds good, alright, so item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda. Alright. Anyone from the public? Why don't we do something crazy today, we'll start online.
Hi, it's Afir Hussein here, forty-eight Myrtle Road.
Yes.
Uh, thank you very much for your discussions tonight, uh, reason for me joining, the item that I like to discuss and bring back up to. Uh, the committee, you know, the commission is. Um, continuation of the December sixth conver- uh, meeting. On Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine pertaining to accessory dwelling units. It's my understanding that the town has opted out from, uh. This requirement, uh, prior to January first, twenty-twenty-three. The reason being is that the committee wanted to review in detail the regulations being proposed by the state of Connecticut and. Uh, overlap them with, um, our current regulations in Wellington and then come up with the best plan forward. So I'd like to ask if that can be put back onto the agenda going forward. My, my personal opinion is that I like the idea of having non-blood-related. Um, individuals living within the, these ADUs and ha- and having the ability to have an exterior ex. Exterior entry point into the ADU and not going through the, uh, primary residence. Um, I don't know if there's a Q and A, but is it, I'll ask anyway, can we put this back onto the agenda for the upcoming weeks? Thank you.
Thanks. Well, we really kind of a begging for a discussion and a public comment, that's, that's against the rule, but certainly appreciate what you had to say, so. Other, other, uh. Comments from the public? Have it in the room.
Nothing that I wanna express right now.
Sure you do, Mr. Tools. Alright, staff recording discussion. At one. I did.
So, I just wanted to, um, kind of put this on there as a, just as a note, and I discussed the budget. Um, with Walter, we had, we presented it to him and, um. Submitted to the Board of Finance for consideration, um. Overall, uh, for this commission, and basically the operational budget, if you wanna call it that, for the land use department. More or less comes out of the planning and zoning commission, we have some line items for inland wetlands and Z B A, but they're really just to cover. Hostage and, and, um, legal notices if we have some of those, but, but the majority of it comes out of P and Z. Um, so overall, in looking at kind of where things are. Um, and what our expenditures have been and how some stuff has changed with COVID, et cetera. Um, there, there was no increase or any change to the budget as presented to the, or what is going to be presented to the Board of Finance. Um, everything basically has been held flat, um, the only piece that we're requesting new, um, is. I'm including a five thousand dollar request for basically document retention, um, so when I got here. I learned that, that the. Potality of the land use files, period, going back to. Time was, is housed in, I recall the wine cellar, but it's just a little tiny basement up there, which up until just recently was dirt. Um, those files are moved, a storage facility several years ago, stacked up. And then subsequently fell down, and so the file were laying in the dirt, they got covered in water and mud and everything else and. Became moldy, a lot of the documents disintegrated, um, staff has tried to work with them. Couple had some reactions to the mold that's on the documents, we worked with the state library to determine what we could get rid of based upon that. Um, but we've also been able to determine through that, that, that. A lot of what's there is actually not within our laser system, so we have files which have been kept in a dirt cellar, which are really that shape. Which we don't have copies of, we need to keep forever and, and now they're degraded, so. Uh, the five thousand dollars would go to basically having us accompany, um, catalog index and scan these files, um. Frankly, because it's been problematic have staff do it because there, some of them are not in great shape and. Moldy documents that you're trying to put on the scanner has, has been bothersome to several people in the building, so it's complicated for us to have them in the office. But also, um, the indexing and scanning of the documents, they've got some technology that we don't have in-house. As far as basically converting the documents to text, so they're searchable, um, which then we would put online for people to continue to access. Uh, the five thousand dollars would be a recurring line item, because I expect it's probably a fifty-plus thousand dollar job, um.
Does somebody thought it was a good idea just to stuff documents over the years in a prepared floor room?
This, my understanding is they were paid, be down on River Road in a storage unit. And they said we wanna save some money and they moved them here.
Wow.
And they were stacked up ten or twelve boxes high. They came over and no one knew.
Why were you doing the ones that are eligible, just that lost the history?
Yeah, so, um, thanks to Peggy and Chris, you may have seen the Conex box that was in the parking lot for six months, everything got moved out while the. Floor was poured, and they went through to the best of their ability outside to try to save almost everything, you probably ended up getting rid of. Fifteen percent, um, and then, uh, went to Yukon Surplus Store and you got twenty-five. File cabinets, which are now in there and move almost everything to this point into file cabinets, so that they're up off the ground, they're protected if there's a leak. But now there's a ventilation system in there, there's proper lighting, there's a concrete floor, s- and. You know, we shouldn't have that happen again, but because it's done, these things can sort of continue to grade.
Does the state offer any grants for that type of stuff, seems like.
Maybe you spill all the tea, so, um, so yes, there are some preservation grants. Um, a couple of years ago, there were some town clerk books that were damaged due to water and other things, so the, the grant was. The town has already received the document preservation grant. Yeah, I had talked about it with them and they're like, you know, we really are not interested in continuing to give the town money to preserve documents that have been damaged. You, it happened once, we gave you this money, it's supposed to be used for other things, um, it's also really. Insignificant amount of money, it's not recurring, so this would be a, a whole, like hell line item, and we would do as much as we could, year after year.
Well, we gotta do something.
Yeah, I, I hope it'll be looked upon favorably, but, um.
Alright, the commission bylaws.
So, um, I just wanna touch on this. Commission does not have bylaws, um, there's nothing that really says when we do what, how things happen, um, et cetera, and it, and it. Sort of occurred to me when we, when we had our meeting last, in, in January, um, because. You effectively decided that you'd wanna do, um, elections to align with the, um, alternating. Um, election cycle that happens every two years. So, so really, the, 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 what started this is, if you wanna hold the elections. To align with when the terms expire and every other year with the traditional election, we need to have something that says that because otherwise, everybody's. January first, we need to have chairman, we need to have secretary, um, but also, I think it's kind of helpful to kind of get everything on the same. Everybody on the same page, if you will, just basic stuff, this is not in. Creating some process that doesn't exist, it's not creating some complexity that, that is really not what you're already doing. But particularly when we're dealing with applications that span multiple months, that have a lot of attendance and dealing with procedures and. You know, a, a lot of, uh, moving parts, I think it's important to have some type of a guiding document. That just says this is how the commission goes about conducting business, this is, um, one of the things that I talked about in there, uh. The commission talked a, a month or two ago about, we don't wanna go to midnight. So it talks about mandatory adjournment and requires the commission to have unanimous consensus to extend the meeting. Um, so basic things like that, um, it talks about the chairman, if he feels it's important to. Keep the meeting moving to establish an initial timeline on people and presenting so that, you know, things will move. Um, it talks about how the public area is conducted and the production of evidence and when the public can speak and when the public cannot speak. Because a lot of this stuff is really foreign to the average person. And they, they know you have a process, they don't understand what it is and, and it, it feels complex at times. Um, so the, the hope here is to just kind of get everything on paper, um, to establish that and, and really. Um, have, have some foundation for the commission.
Now, there's good stuff on here, particularly around alternates and everything.
Right.
You know, to understand like the role of an alternate and so forth and, and make sure we're doing that right as far as seating or.
Yeah.
Or not.
And, and I reviewed several versions of this from various commissions and I stripped out a lot of stuff that I think is noise and isn't necessary, this is the. You know, the basics of what needs to occur, um, there's, you know, some stuff in there, again, about agendas and. Where those posted and the official documents are on the final land use office and, um. So I really just wanna provide this to you to think about, to take a look at and, and, you know, potential consideration for a future meeting, but, um. Nothing I'm looking for tonight, and, and this is a very, very draft document that I pulled together based upon other. Examples that I, I've dealt with.
How do you guys track action items?
As far as, like, with the old canvas thing, you said, oh, let's revisit name here, so how do you know? On the other side of that door is a six-foot whiteboard, and I just, you know, we try to track kind of what we've gotta do there and. Look at what's on the agenda and what we think is reasonable to put a agenda on top of whatever else is there, but yeah. So, one of the things that we can kind of view is moving forward is, you might have noticed the agenda looks a little bit different than it normally does. And we're now building all of our agendas through open, through permitting system, so, um, that allows us to sort of. We'll have a di- a se- a separate record for each agenda and we can build those things out as things go, so if we need to move things from one agenda to the next. We can kind of structure those out, so we already have the next one started, because we had to move some stuff from this one to the next. Um, and then all the documents are attached to that agenda, so when it's, when it's graded in that system, it's all searchable. So what we'll end up with is a catalog of each agenda, what was on it, and, um.
So you've already created an agenda for January of two thousand twenty-four?
Sure, could, and then that would, that would basically. Yeah, we, we, um, yeah, in theory we could, but yeah, I have on there that we've talked about revisiting cannabis, um. It'll be interesting because it's, it's entirely possible that they will not have been open for very long, I'm jamming there because things happening with the state, but. Yeah, it's a, a long to-do list.
Alright, uh, regulation codification review.
So one of the things we talked about was that I submitted on, in conjunction with the town clerk's office, a request to ARPA for, um. Funds to go through the codification process, which we've kind of talked about what that involves, um, so at the meeting on this past Monday, they approved the funds. Um, so now we'll have to work with the vendor, um, just, you know, we gotta go through the procurement process and, and, um. Kind of contracting, et cetera, but so that will involve an organization review of the regs, a review of statutory criteria. Um, all those things and then getting those things online, um, it'll help in tracking amendment dates, it'll help track, you know, um. All the changes and current proposed and showing when certain documents were, or certain sections were modified, what effective dates are. I think it'll be, it'll be beneficial, um, so I just wanted to let the commissioner know that.
We eventually get new zoning books.
Yes.
Are pretty outdated.
Yeah, yeah, um, so they have a specific format that they will set it up in to make sure that, that the numbering system makes sense. And then it provides for if you wanna add a section, you're not creating all this deorganizing the rest of the document. So it's not said it's gonna happen in a month or two, um, but we're gonna hope to. Get that started, and it also will involve ordinances, um, we have reference to a driveway ordinance which doesn't exist, we have reference to. One or two others that I have listed over, that are referenced in various documents but do not exist, have never been adopted. So we're saying we need to do something in accordance with this ordinance that the town never established, so it'll be some, things like that, which we'll also pick up on. Make sure we, we address. And lastly, S D Z review with E D C, set joint meeting dates, so, um, I think in the last meeting I mentioned that the E D C. Is interested in having a joint discussion with the commission, um, and figuring out where to go, and now that everything is. Then decided upon revised effective moratorium, et cetera, with the S D Z. We discussed it at the last E D C meeting, um, and, and it looks like they, um, have a forum that you get folks, um. Here for a workshop between both groups at the next P C C meeting.
Sure.
So, um. We will have, a- as far as pending items, it'll basically be that and.
And we have the yearly renewal of, uh, bars.
Yes, yeah, so they, that was, we're gonna be on, they're supposed to be on tonight, they asked to push it off, because they're trying to get some other stuff pulled together, so we'll just have that.
Twenty-first, right?
So, um, I don't know, do you, would your preference be to just handle the renewals first?
I'd rather handle the renewals first, that, that, that sounds fair to have them sit there and listen to us, like, talking and talking and talking. They sit there wanting their business.
It's, um, I mean, yeah, I, we could, we could, I suppose we could push them off another meetings if we wanted to, they're only one-year renewals, so there's no public hearing associated.
And they'll continue to be one-year renewal, even though the change of the home occupation depends.
So that's a separate item, yeah, they have the right to request one year, no hearing, if they wanna go beyond that thing. So I just wanted to.
We're all familiar with.
Yeah. So that'll be for the next meeting, um. That's all, that's about it.
And it is nine, oh, two, eight, S, T.
There we go.